Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting for May 18th, 2021. Welcome to Gilbert Town Council. I don't see any scouts in the room, so I would like to ask Vice Mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I would like to invite John Kamau from the Kenya Presbyterian Church of Arizona down for our invocation. Is John here this evening? Thank you, Judy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here this evening and especially to give this invocation. Thank you so much, and let's pray. Lord God Almighty, I thank you this evening for each one of these leaders gathered here today. Thank you for choosing them to lead and for protecting them and their families. We repent our sins of commission and omission as we invite you to reign supreme in our midst. Father, we thank you for all the people of this great city, our state, and our country. May your goodness and mercy continue to be with us all. As each of these leaders prepare their hearts and their minds and their body to serve those of us that you have blessed, to call this beautiful city of Gilbert our home, let love and be the fundamental pillar that unites us in service to your people. Bless them with the wisdom like Solomon and courage like David and the humility of Joseph as you remind them to do all the important things that they can do to improve the lives of those that you have called them to serve. God Almighty, we pray that every day they serve this, they serve as if they are serving you. Grant them the knowledge and wisdom to guide this community to dwell together in unity, peace, and liberty. For this, we pray and trust in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for joining us this evening. That was a lovely invocation. We appreciate you. I will now ask our town clerk to conduct a roll call.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentez.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. And we have no presentations and proclamations this evening, so we will now move right into the consent agenda, and I will pass that over to Vice Mayor. Oh, go to Communications. Sorry, I'm missing that from my, I missed that on my, I lost my notes and I had to improvise. I would like to go to Communications from Citizens and again, pass it off to the Vice Mayor. Thank you.
We have several requests to speak this evening. We have 18 on various topics. The Communications from Citizens portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the Town Council matters of interest or concern related to the town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the Town Council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, we will be listening as you speak. We regret that we cannot respond beyond thanking you for your comments. We do ask that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium and state your name and place of residence and then begin speaking. You'll have two minutes each. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, yelling. Any personal attacks or threats are inappropriate in this forum and will be ground at the discretion of the mayor for ending a speaker's time at the podium. Our first speaker tonight will be Sandra Avery.
Hi, my name is Sandra Avery and I live in Cottonwood Crossings. And I don't have anything prepared, so you can just beat me when my two minutes is up. It's regarding the adventure park that is planned out at Crossroads Park. And I'm wondering if Mr. Hendricks is listening. Thank you. I don't know if you're all aware, because you're so busy and you have so many things going on, but just the general history of this. And in 2016, there was a neighborhood meeting that was held with a few of the real close neighbors there. And Ben Peterson then informed thus, or formed them, I wasn't there, that it would be a, or Ben Cooper, I'm sorry, that there would be no go-karts, that it would be an outdoor maze and a splash pad. And so then, in 2017, a lease was signed, no go-karts. And then he didn't have enough money and so sort of was held for him until 2020, when he came back in and said, "Okay, I'm ready to go. We've got go-karts. We've got miniature golf. We've got a splash pad." No sound study was done until February of this year. And that sound study is really in question as far as not doing the sound study. Ben Cooper has stated that the sound study was done with 21 go-karts going full throttle around the court, around the course. His sound study expert has said that it was a simulated sound study with one engine. And so there's just that. The other thing that doesn't get a whole lot of attention is the noise at the miniature golf section, which will have sound effects from plane crashes and bombs. And there's a provision in the lease that says if the go-karts are too loud, that they can raise the music in the miniature golf section. So just trying to let you know those things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandra. Our next speaker will be Testover.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've worked in the healthcare profession my entire career. I'm worried about our air pollution. The EPA, or the EPA, rather, has said that gas-powered engines like those in go-karts produce the same emissions in just one hour as a typical car driving 350 miles. That's one go-kart in one hour. Think of 10 to 20 go-karts, 15 to 16 hours a day for seven, for seven days a week. That's a lot of emissions. Now, yet, people in Arizona and in Gilbert were asked to help with our air quality. We're helped, we're asked to carpool when we can. On certain days, we're asked to refrain from using our gas-powered leaf blowers and lawn mowers. We're supposed to fill up our gas tanks early in the morning to help with the air. We have our no-burn days. And then, of course, we have days like old people like me and people with respiratory problems can't even go outside. So there's a conflict here. I mean, what's so good about the go-karts when we're trying our best to limit our air quality or to keep our air quality good? I love Gilbert because it is so family-oriented, but certainly there are other activities that we can choose that won't compromise our health. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker will be Sandra Nosek.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Nosek. I have lived in Cottonwood Crossings for 26 years at 1091 South Crossroads Drive. I spoke a few weeks ago about my concern over the gasoline-powered go-kart track due to the noise and the underground gasoline storage tanks that are already a problem in Arizona with close to 6,000 leaking and on a waiting list for cleanup. The concern being that most companies do not replace these tanks every 25 years, which is recommended. So they begin leaking. This is a concern for our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, not to mention the noise the go-karts make and what will be emitted to our surrounding neighborhood. I want to ask for you to reject the gasoline-powered go-kart track in all phases and consider reinstituting the maze or skate park or whatever else is on the list. Secondly, in the proposal, it was suggested that the theme for the mini-golf could be changed. My concern is the plane crashes and explosions. I am deaf with cochlear implants and am concerned that this may be too stimulating to my processors at the frequency rate that they are going to be admitted every minute, several hours a day. My other concern is for those with PTSD and mental illness, and that might possibly set them off. I know the proposal states that all noise will be pointed down into the mini-golf area and should not be heard from the neighborhoods, but there isn't a guarantee that that won't be heard. I know we all would appreciate further examination of the ramifications for placing the go-karts and mini-golf theme, theme in this park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Randy Nelson.
Good evening. I have been writing to various reporters and so forth. This is a letter. Once I read it, it was eight minutes long. So this is really chopped down. So it's going to be choppy and I've eliminated a lot of explanation and so forth, but you'll get the point. Dear Rachel, you have been featuring Arizona on your program recently, and I wanted you to see how these ethics problems filter down to Gilbert, Arizona, despairing, displaying the very worst of Connections Matter residents don't. Todd Thornton, a principal of Casa Golf, and Ben Cooper, a former councilman, are on the verge of legally doing something 111 towns in six southwestern states containing 150 go-kart tracks have never allowed, thereby crushing our very quality of life. Our Town Council, at that time, decided our lives had no, had no value. A group of handpicked investors form a company, and we use Casa Golf to build a family fund center between two neighborhoods and a dog park for shy and timid dogs. A zoning expert and Town Councilman resigns only to later reappear as an investor and spokesman for that company. They hold a legally required neighborhood meeting and present a cute little park. In retrospect, they presented the three quietest of their pre-approved attractions. This was not designed to inform, but designed to gaslight the neighbors. We believe that five, 10, and 15-year connections between that spokesman and our Town Council and our planning commission took precedence over residents when the following happens: When the plan changed from a maze to 21 gas-powered go-karts, a planner, an unelected employee, decides 21 gas go-karts were no different than a maze. So no announcement, no announcements were made. Developers count. Residents don't. The EPA numbers had been mentioned, but that extrapolates to a car driving 110,000 miles per day or well over 771,000 miles per week, 250 feet from my bedroom window. Prevailing winds take it directly into our neighborhoods. Think of the effect on children. I personally have moderately severe asthma, so this amounts to a life sentence of house arrest. The Town Council felt our lives held no value. Over 670 people signed a change.org petition in five days when the yellow notification signs go up, saying that they had never heard of this project because it was kept, it just kept quiet. We were allowed no input at that commission meeting, but were told by a member that we could complain if the carts were too loud. We later find the lease allows them to turn up the music if the carts get too loud. Developers count. Residents don't. Earlier, Gilbert's rules on sound complaints were changed from taking the reading outside the home to inside with all the windows closed, even though Arizonans live outside seven to eight months of the year. House arrest. The park director approved a parking plan despite his admission of never making an onsite visit. I videotaped the parking lot on a non-event Saturday and found seven open parking spaces, yet SAP forecast 871 visitors on a June weekend.
Thank you, Randy.
June weekend day. The moves, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Randy. Do you have a final statement?
Yes, I do. I could go on, but you see the ethic issues of how development is now done in Gilbert, Arizona, where the residents' only recourse is to hire an attorney to protect us from our own Town Council and to play Where's Waldo to find out where an ex-councilman spent his time pushing a project invisible to the neighbors through the Byzantine Gilbert system. We have no Citizens Review Board. SAP calls us the gateway to the entertainment district, ironically confirming our very position. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Our next speaker will be Charlie Gerard.
Charlie, please take anything to the staff table. Thank you.
As I present, if you guys could just focus on this front page. All I want you to do is, as you listen to me, just focus on this front page. Very good, okay. Okay, so I know this seems like, oh, my name is Charlie Gerard. Cottonwood Crossing. Name hasn't changed. I know this seems like déjà vu, but to the neighbors affected by this project, it seems like the Twilight Zone. Okay, the only reason I'm here today is because you guys are decision makers. You guys are going to make the decision which determines the fate of our neighborhood. And it's very, very important. It's critical. It's essential that you guys have all the data associated with making this decision. Please keep your, I talked about that, okay? The Planning Commission approved placing the go-kart and water park in the middle of two, which you see in here, two housing areas you can see here with the red, okay? And, and just like the previous speakers, you know, they used one simulated go-kart. But one of the things that we found out through our studies, it's not the motor, which Ben Cooper, you know, attested to. It's really the other noises associated with the go-karts. And that's the exhaust systems, the drivetrain, the squeaky tires, and the brakes which generate the noise. They never did actual studies. And I asked you guys two or three times to please go down to Sun Splash, just spend five or 10 minutes listening, you know? But they never talked about the sirens, the loudspeakers, the music, the crowd noises. And the other thing is which they mentioned, there was no traffic study. There's no parking available. And Knox is a two-lane road. Okay, Ben Cooper quoted this Gilbert Code section, the 42-61. It's a noise code, but he didn't fail to realize, or he failed to mention 42-64. I asked you to please look at it. I have it in here. And it talks about all the noise violations and what we can report. And it's not a comprehensive list, but it's, it's a pretty good list and you have it. And this is, and but coincidentally, the two staff members in the planning committee are the ones that referenced us to this. They said, "Call the cops," is what they said. So in summary, okay, you will be asked on June 15th to make a decision that has permanent, potentially devastating impact on our neighborhood and our rights to raise our families in a neighbor, to raise our families in a neighborhood like the ones you live in where you enjoy safety, security, peace, peace and quiet. We're not going to get that with 15, 16 hours a day go-kart noise and all the surrounding ancillary noises. The go-kart park will bring noise levels which impact our ability to go to bed at a decent hour, continuous traffic through our neighborhood because they're going to circumvent. It's only human nature to bypass constraints. So Knox is a two-lane road, so they're going to be driving through our neighborhoods. And then, the unheard of, the transient traffic after dark because they're going to be open from 11 to 12 at midnight. So who knows who's going to be coming through our neighborhoods. So my last point is, please make a decision as if you lived in our neighborhood because you guys are the decision makers. And look at where this is, right in the middle of two housing areas.
Thank you, Charlie. Our next speaker will be Dean Christensen.
No obnoxious sirens today. So you won't have to cut my mic. I'd like to present the following factual information. I'll wait. Thank you. I'd like to present the following factual information. In March of 2017, the Gilbert Town Council voted 6-0 in favor of granting a lease of 30 years with possible extensions to Ben Cooper and SAP Holdings for the Santan Adventure Park. Ben Cooper of SAP Holdings was a chairman in Gilbert, a member and chairman of the Gilbert Economic Development Department for six years, chairman of the Gilbert General Plan Subcommittee for a year, and from 2010 to 2015, Gilbert Town Council. Ben Cooper in 2014 endorsed Bridgette Peterson for Gilbert Town Mayor, or excuse me, Gilbert Town Council. Ben Cooper still presently serves on the advisory board for the Gilbert General Plan. Here is the 2017 Gilbert Town Council that granted Ben Cooper and SAP Holdings that lease. Jen Daniel, she served on the Gilbert Town Council with Ben Cooper for five years. Victor Peterson served on the Gilbert Town Council with Ben Cooper for five years. Eddie Cook served on Gilbert Town Council with Ben Cooper for four years. Jared Taylor served on Gilbert Town Council with Ben Cooper for two years. Bridgette Peterson in 2014, Ben Cooper endorsed Bridgette Peterson for Gilbert Town Council. 2017, Bridgette Peterson recommended Ben Cooper join a focus group for mixed land usage. In 2020, Ben Cooper donated to Bridgette Peterson's campaign. Jordan Ray, although he was absent from the Santan Adventure Park vote, he also served on Gilbert Town Council with Ben Cooper. Scott Anderson has a bit of a pass here. He was not on Town Council in 2017, but he may have known Ben Cooper in his activities with Gilbert Town Council. In closing, I'd like to say that there may very well be nothing illegal here, but in the very least, Ben's association with the Gilbert Town Council that approved his private venture presents as a significant conflict of interest. It simply appears on the outside to be an inside deal. Between Ben and his Gilbert Town Council peers and friends, this simply, this simply does not look right. On June 15th, 2021, the current Gilbert Town Council has the ability to set this impropriety aside and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gabriel Franca.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Franca. This is the first time I'm speaking in a Town Council. So sorry, I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to go on the record, you know, talk to you guys that we elected, that, asking, pleading for you to listen to all of us. I've been go-karting before and it's pretty noisy. And it's hard to think that, especially now that I'm even listening to more facts that are being exposed here, that this doesn't look right. So I would just like for you guys to listen to us. Like they said, like you lived in that neighborhood that's right across the street, and just please listen to your voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Our next speaker will be Nikki Reber.
I'm Nikki Reber. I live at 1138 South Wanda Drive, Cottonwood Crossings. I canvassed a good portion of my end of the neighborhood last night. I found a lot of people who were aware of the situation but thought it only concerns the go-karts. Get rid of them or keep them. I told them, "No, there are other items that could be put in there in place of the go-karts that will be just as noisy." Also informed them that they are most likely going to lose the dog park. Some of these people have never been to that dog park. Others have. They are very upset over this. So the ones that I found that said they just wanted the go-karts gone, they want the whole thing gone now. They don't want any part of it. They want it gone, not built there. My feeling is that it should not be built in crossroads. You have a regional park that has more than enough acreage that you could take a portion of that acreage and say, "Hey, these guys had this much in crossroads. Why can't we give them that same amount of land in the regional and tell them to go build their stuff there where it is more appropriate? We can find another use for that little piece of land in crossroads that will not upset everybody near as much as what this has." I wish you'd take that into consideration, that you could try to do something in a regional park. It belongs there. I'm not against what he wants to do. I just don't want it in crossroads. And it has nothing to do with a "not in my backyard" situation. This is just plain wrong. And believe me, it does all kind of stink a little bit. I said years ago, when I was building my house in Gilbert, and I had all kinds of problems with the building department, I said, "The right hand at the Gilbert Town doesn't know what the left hand is doing." And over the years, I have watched the planning commission and the councils, different ones, prove that over and over again. The left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. So how about y'all get your hands together and figure out a good thing for us? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rob Giles.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Rob Giles, Mesa resident. Last week, I sent each of you an email outlining serious concerns and allegations. I served Gilbert with distinction for 23 years. At the pinnacle of my career, I served as Parks and Recreation Manager, having overseen at some point every work group, work team, division, and program area in the department. Gilbert has accomplished some impressive Gilbert has accomplished some impressive and innovative things. Yet Gilbert has also enabled and tolerated abusive and hostile leadership, and has issues with unethical and biased hiring, in my opinion. Often, these types of behaviors will not reach the council level. Fulfilling the paradoxical Peter Principle is no way to undertake a succession plan. Falling into the Peter Principle trap is an indication of a fear-based organization. And often occurs because the promoted individuals are not considered a threat to leadership. Many employees relate to the issues I've described. But the current culture does not allow them to really be openly honest. The totality of the concerns I have raised need full transparency so the council can be assured the community is operated according to the highest standards of conduct. You know, I face a permanent retirement shortfall because of the egregious actions of others. So I therefore urge council to look into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Our next speaker will be Omar Hamid, followed by Zain Hamid. We can go in either order.
Good evening. My name is Omar Hamid. As you all know, I've been coming in for the last six months. And I think I personally come to know each one of you pretty good. So I'm always glad to be here. I'm here tonight to talk about the WW 1060 project. Again, you're upsetting 24 neighbors and potentially a lot more people. I'm urging you to please explore all the other options, including the free option. Don't be beholden to the town manager. I want Mayor Peterson, who's been very gracious and kind to us, to please get together with four other council members and do what's right for the WW 1060 project. Again, I thank you for your reconsideration, and it's always a pleasure to come and see you.
Our next speaker will be Zain Hamid.
My name is Zain Hamid. I think a lot of homeowners, well, a lot of them, will be affected by Project 1060. And I think there is a lot of other ways to do the project instead of taking away our land. And I think a lot of children, like me, would like to keep our land and play in our backyards with our cousins and family. There are lots of other ways to do this decision. So please reconsider the decision and just find another way that'll make all of us happy and will make Mayor Peterson and all Gilbert council members happy with your decision.
Well said, Zain. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Leslie Novak.
Good evening and hello all. Thank you for your time and consideration and the opportunity to speak. I truly do thank you. I am here again asking for the WW 1060 sewer project to be put back on the agenda for a revote. Put on the agenda for an discussion to gain clearer understanding of the breadth of the impact this project has had and will continue to have. The $225,302.60 on top of the $250,000 paid to lawyers to sell us on a need for the seizing of our land for a project that hasn't even been determined. I truly do thank you for the item, that item being on the agenda to authorize the study of this. But I'm also saddened by the amount of money that is being spent on a project that was avoidable and could have helped many people in our beloved town in very tangible ways. As I patronize local businesses this week, I've seen the effect that COVID has had on small business owners. And I was truly saddened to listen to an elderly business owner struggle with justifying paying an extra $15 for medication and having to sell, put on sale, some items in hopes of gaining that $15 back. And I thought, wow, $500,000 doesn't seem much in the light of the amount of money that the city spends. But $500,000 to struggling business owners really is a lot. And I would consider that, that money be, stop spending that money. Put this item back on the agenda and revote it. There are ways to get this project done for a lot less money. So I thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker will be Victoria Schaefer.
Hi, everybody. I'm Victoria Schaefer. I live at 261 East Hemlock Avenue. And I'm talking about Project 1060. I've been here before. What's coming to my mind most of all are a couple of things. One, it seems that both projects that are being discussed here this evening have been sort of gavelled in without any of us having knowledge of them prior to them being put on the books and started. So these projects have affected our town members in Gilbert and somehow are upon us before we even knew that they were there. So my one concern is, how did this happen? And this has to stop happening. We should all have been made aware at with Project 1060. We should all have known before this became a project, that it was being considered on the books. So how do we stop that for one? The second thing is, is that the use of eminent domain is supposed to be there if there are no other options. And what we've displayed and what Jason Montgomery has displayed is that there have been three options available for our project. Only one of them has to do with the seizure of our land. So the use of eminent domain does not even seem like it should be on the table. This can be done. This Project 1060 that we both, we all know, is sort of essential. We do have to fix our sewer systems. But nobody has to take our land in order to do it. So please stop the use of eminent domain. Please reconsider. And I've been told recently that there is a, I'm not sure what to call it, but there's a vote out to say, should we, should we keep studying this? And so my, my answer to that is yes, keep studying. Because there are other options for this project. There is no need to take our land in order to accomplish the sewer project. So please, namaste, all of you. Please don't take our land.
Thank you, Victoria. Our next speaker will be Tom Patterson.
Good evening, Tom Patterson. I live at 241 East Hemlock Avenue, talking on Proposition WW 1060. Also, I'm referring to items number nine and 10 in this agenda that we have here tonight. There's one well in my neighborhood. You have access to this well through easement, easement gates provided long from Burke into the well, where you can open up and have access whenever you want. You put a fireman's lock on that easement gate, and you can have access 24/7. It's been said numerous times that there's no need to own our land, just need access to that manhole to get inside and reseal the tube. During the spending of another quarter million dollars, consider the option of not taking residents' land away, saving both of us money and lawsuits. This shouldn't be a problem, seeing how this new survey that should have been done already came about quickly. We have signs around our neighborhood letting everybody know what's going on. We've had a rally, and we plan on more. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker will be Nolan Baldwin.
Thank you for your time, Mayor and Town Council. Again, 1060, in case you were wondering. You know, we did receive a notice from Mr. Montgomery this week, or actually, last Wednesday went out, saying that you're going to be voting on the agenda tonight to approve money to do some engineering studies about some options. And Phase 1 includes coming up with 10 options, 10 alternatives, I guess it says in the wording. And then Phase 2 would narrow it down to five alternatives. So that's great, we have alternatives. My question is, as was mentioned earlier this evening, if we have alternatives to repair and take care of these problems without taking our land, then those should be the alternatives that we go after. You know, eminent domain is when there's no other alternatives, when we have to build a road because there's no other way to get people from one place to another. So I'm just asking that we consider that and quickly do it. We've been doing this for six months. We have been in limbo where we couldn't sell. We can't do anything with our land. And the letter from Mr. Montgomery says it might be 11 more months. That's a year and a half that people are sitting here with no options available. If we try to sell, we've got to disclose it. We're going to be selling for less. Right now, we're in an economy where if someone wanted to sell, they're going to get peak dollar. 11 months, who knows what it's going to be? It'd be nice to have the Town Council, someone step up and say, you know what, we can do this without taking their land. Let's look at those options and let them know that they can go forward with their lives rather than keeping us on hold for nearly a year and a half altogether on this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Greg Davis.
My name's Greg Davis. I live at 461 East Commerce. What I want to talk about tonight is Item 9A on the agenda. It's the funding for the alternatives for the WW 1060 project. I hope you approve that. Talking with Jason, I'm glad that the council and the city's looking at alternatives and funding that search. As Nolan stated, it could take 11 months. The neighborhood, we've had one sale go bad already because they had to disclose it. If any other people in the neighborhood wanted to sell, the same thing would happen. So I'm urging the council to come up quick with a solution. 11 months just won't work. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next speakers will be Debbie Kuhn and Ron Kuhn.
Thanks, City Council, for listening to all of us. As you can tell, I'm at 425 East Commerce. As you can tell, all of us neighbors are really concerned about our land. We love living in Gilbert, and we know you guys will treat us fairly. They always encouraged with Jason's email and talking to us. And so I would just ask if we could cut it down from 11 months. That's a, that's a really long time, especially when we've got all these alternatives that we've presented and are going forward. So appreciate it. Thanks for all you're doing, and thank you.
I'm Debbie Kuhn. And so he said he would talk about that. And I have other issues besides all this here. But I'm overwhelmed with the money at your fingertips. I'm overwhelmed that for some of you, I've lived longer than you have, and I've dreamed longer than you have. And I've scratched and saved and struggled to get what we have longer than some of you have. So I don't know that all of you can appreciate or even be in my shoes where I'm at. But yet you have the power to take it away, to take my whole barn away. And it just, it's mind-blowing when we have, especially when we have other options. And I'm just going to beg you to please reconsider. There's so much easier and less expensive and very doable. And so it's just, it's, I kind of just can't believe this hasn't already been fixed by now. We're being held hostage by this eminent domain. It's powerful, it's scary. It has us under so much stress. And I'm, I've lived long, I'm almost 60 years old. I've lived stress. And I want to deal with things that are more important, like taking care of family and taking care of paying our bills and our children and our grandchildren, and not be so worried being up here shaking with my heart pounding because I have to do this. It's just not fair. And the other thing is, is when my daughter and I horseback ride, when we get to Lindsey Road to push the light, there are signs that we have to pass, and they end up right behind our horses. They are sharp, they are dangerous. Horses, just a few, one step backwards will impale their hind ends. I don't know what will happen to us, but it can be very dangerous if that happens. Please go and make those signs round and maybe a little, give us some more space, please. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. That concludes our communication from citizens. I do want to thank everybody for keeping pretty close to the allotted time and making your statements very articulate and simple today so that we could listen to your concerns. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We will have Items Number 2, 3, and 9 pulled off the consent calendar for discussion. May I have?
Could you pull 10 as well?
So we will pull Items 2, 3, 9, and 10 for discussion. And we will also bring forth Item Number 22, which will be a motion to appoint to the Parks and Recreation Board Holly Protolsky, Cody Zimer, and David Budinay with full terms beginning May 18th, 2021, and ending May 12th, 2024. And Jason Giroux with a partial term beginning May 18th, 2021, and ending May 12th, 2023. May I have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar? Number 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12, 13, 13A, 14, and 22.
So moved.
Please vote. Or we need a second? Please vote. That motion passes. We'll move to Councilmember Yentes to discuss Items 2 and 3.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I pulled these two items just because, not because I'm opposed to, you know, designing this project specifically. I do think it's necessary, but just for two reasons. One, I think it's a bit of the cart before the horse from the standpoint of, I know our community has asked for appropriations in the state budget for this particular project, for the construction of it. This is two elements of the design phase. Part of that is contracted to scope out value engineering to determine what the final costs of that are going to be. And so I think from some standpoint, it should be the other way around. We should know exactly how much it's going to cost before. We're asking for a specific appropriation, in this case, from our legislative body. But secondarily, just don't think it's appropriate for statewide taxpayers to fund projects for specifically things that will benefit Gilbert taxpayers. I would take that position consistently, no matter where it's coming from, the region. I don't think Gilbert taxpayers should be paying for special projects for, you know, things in Avondale or other areas in the community. So, I mean, then secondarily, I just think that this project in its construction should be including the transportation bond as the alternative method of funding instead of asking, you know, all state taxpayers to pay for it. So I don't necessarily have a problem with, you know, us spending the monies for the design work on this, but more of believe that this is a little premature if we're already asking for an appropriation.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Are there any other comments on these two items? May I have a motion to approve Items 2 and 3?
Second.
Do we have a first? Do we have a first?
I thought you said you had a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Please vote. The motion passes. We will move to Item 9, and I believe we have a presentation from staff. Jason Montgomery.
I have a brief presentation providing a summary of Agenda Items Number 9 and 10. Staff is proposing to complete a combined corridor analysis along the Western Canal from Lindsey Road to Gilbert Road. This corridor contains three critical pieces of town utility infrastructure. A 36-inch sewer installed in 1986 within a 25-foot utility easement. The rehabilitation of this pipeline is included within Project WW 1060. A condition assessment of this pipeline was completed in 2017 and classified this as failure likely in the foreseeable future. South of this sewer is an 18-inch reclaimed water pipeline installed in 1986 within the same easement. This pipeline is anticipated to need replacement based on age and material. However, within the motion tonight, staff is requesting to create Project WW 1246 to complete a condition assessment and based on the subsequent recommendations, implement, repair, or replacement needs accordingly. South of these pipelines, mainly within the Western Canal right-of-way, is a 24-inch potable water pipeline installed in 1991. Project WA 1546 is an active CIP project working to complete a condition assessment and immediate repairs by the end of this calendar year. Based on the criticality of this infrastructure, known degradation of the existing sewer, and anticipated poor condition of the two adjacent pipelines, a combined corridor analysis is beneficial to enhance our understanding of the, to enhance our understanding of the condition of the adjacent reclaimed and water pipelines. This analysis will also be instrumental in identifying potential opportunities to complete work on each facility in conjunction with the others. This corridor also contains numerous SRP facilities from both water and electrical transmission. As you can see in this figure, the Western Canal, as well as a small delivery lateral run between two sets of electrical transmission poles and towers throughout the entire alignment. As part of this corridor analysis, significant collaboration will occur with SRP investigating The corridor analysis is proposed in two phases. Phase One, analyzing up to 10 alternatives. Phase Two, we'll take five of the most feasible alternatives and continue to refine those for an eventual scope selection for all three town utilities. Alternatives considered will expand on what has been completed to date, consider ideas from residents, and include significant stakeholder collaboration for both the reclaimed and potable water pipelines. Analysis may also include potential alternative alignments for both the town and SRP facilities. The anticipated schedule is shown with Phase One occurring from June to October, and Phase Two from November to April of 2022. The critical path for this schedule is driven by the 24-inch potable water condition assessment, scheduled to provide assessment data at the end of the calendar year to feed the relevant information for the Phase Two of this corridor analysis. So to briefly summarize the items for consideration this evening, Item 9 includes a contingency request from the wastewater replacement fund to create Project WW 1246 and fund the reclaimed water condition assessment effort. This item also requests approval of change order number one with Intelis to complete the corridor analysis. Item Number 10 is requesting approval of change order number one with Black &amp; Beach for Project WA 1546 to allow for hydraulic modeling to be performed to determine feasibility and impact on the water system for each alternative considered. Intelis will provide the various corridor alternatives. Black &amp; Beach will perform the hydraulic modeling and provide the findings for incorporation into the ultimate corridor analysis. With that, I'm available for questions.
Do we have comments from council members?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Jason, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate your continual communications with the residents. It's very important to all of us up here that we continue to keep everybody apprised on what we're doing. And I pulled this item because I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity, all be sitting together as we understand what we're approving and what we're moving forward to find the best solution, not only for the town, but for the residents as well. And I think one thing we've learned through this process is that this isn't like going out and changing your sprinklers when you have a problem. This is a much bigger issue, and it takes a lot of expertise. And so thank you for doing that, and that's my reasoning for pulling it tonight. And unless there were other questions, you do? Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. Jason, thank you for the presentation, and I think it's important that we, that the town communicates what's happening with the neighbors that are impacted by this. The schedule that you laid out, 11 months, Phase One and Phase Two, seems like a long time. I'm sure there's more in there. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about what takes place in 11 months, and is there a way to shorten that timeframe? Some, some people spoke tonight, and they talked about the impact of having to put their decisions on hold if they're choosing to market their home or sell it. And so if you could talk a little bit about those schedules and those timelines, and if there's a way to reduce those.
Definitely. So going into this, to have our consultant prepare this scope, fee, and schedule, a lot of assumptions have to be made. So within Phase One, they've assumed we're going to analyze 10 alternatives. That includes preparing figures, plans, necessary to complete stakeholder collaboration with SRP and the town stakeholders. So we'll develop those alternatives, have stakeholder workshops to provide feedback and input from those stakeholders, go back, revise those figures and plans as necessary, prepare conceptual cost estimates, provide presentations to council and also the public. So there's a lot of collaboration and workshops associated with those 10 alternatives. That's for Phase One and for Phase Two. As I mentioned, a critical piece of this analysis is that 24-inch potable water line. We're currently underway on that assessment. However, being that's a primary transmission main to the west part of town, we can't shut that line down until this fall. The assessment will be completed by sending a technology through a dry pipe and doing electromagnetic inspection to determine the remaining useful life, and that can't occur till this fall. So in order to incorporate that real in-place data for that potable water line, that can't be completed until the end of the year. Therefore, we would not like to proceed with Phase Two until the end of the year if we want to incorporate that real data.
Great, thank you for that, Jason. And it's been good working with you on this project. I've learned a lot. The more I learn about what you do, the more amazed I am at how complex these issues are when we're dealing with critical infrastructure that's providing either wastewater or water to the citizens here in Gilbert. And it's good to see you without a mask. I don't know if I've ever seen you with that one before.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve. 9 and 10, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote for Items 9 and 10. That motion passes, and that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're getting some weird feedback up here. Eric, can you hear that? Thank you for nodding your head in acknowledgement. I can see you. Moving into our public hearing portion of our agenda, we have, one item was pulled, Number 17 was pulled. So we have Items 15, 16, 18, and 19. Does anyone need to hear a presentation on any of those before I open the public hearing? Being none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve 15, 16, 18, and 19.
Excuse me, Mayor, could we close the public hearing as well?
Oh, close the public hearing after I make that, thank you. I always forget if I have to make, if somebody has to make the motion first and then close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moving to our administrative items, we have a presentation for the recommendation of the American Rescue Plan Act funding and allocation. And I see Elena coming down, our new deputy, Deputy Assistant Town Manager. Sorry, we changed names again. Assistant to the Assistant Town Manager, AATM.
Thank you.
All right, should have said Elena Bay, because I think it's your first time speaking to us in your new role.
It is, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to present to you, let me put the glasses on, on the opportunity to present to you on the recommendations for the allocation of the American Rescue Funds, Rescue Plan Act funds. You're right, this is the first time, I'm not even used to the clicker. There we go. Council had previously provided some thoughtful guidance and suggestions to staff on the desired distribution of these funds, and that feedback and direction has been further researched and is a big part of what we've incorporated into tonight's follow-up presentation to council. The ARPA was signed into law on March 11 by President Biden, and it's intended to provide support to state, local, and tribal governments in response to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The funding formulation for the distribution of the ARPA funds is very similar to CDB distribution formulations. The parameters for its use, though, are much different and significantly more broad. Funds from ARPA will be distributed over the next two years in two equal payments, one year apart. They must be obligated for use no later than December 31, 2024. There are some parameters and restrictions specific to the use of ARPA funds, and they are provided right now in interim guidance provided by the Department of Treasury. The interim final rule was issued last week by the Department of Treasury, and what you see in this presentation is being considered within that interim guidance and its staff's application of those parameters for Gilbert's needs. However, the final rule has not been released, and as such, further exploration of the eligibility and application of these proposed allocations will have to take place. Council will be apprised of any changes that impact the supported programs or allocation recommendations. As the interim final rule presents some parameters that we were, that were previously unknown, two areas of consideration within this packet, the costs of the protests in 2020, and the set aside for the crime lab will have to be examined in greater depth. Specifically, the guidance that we're using applies to three areas. The first one, facilitation to the access of resources such as evidence-based community violence intervention programs to prevent violence and to mitigate the increase of violence. There's very specific language within the interim guidance that speaks to using fiscal recovery funds to facilitate the access to resources that improve health outcomes, including services that connect residents with healthcare resources and public assistance programs, and build healthier environments such as specifically evidence-based community violence intervention programs to prevent violence and mitigate the increase of violence during the pandemic. The second category that we're referencing is the mitigation and prevention of COVID-19, including costs for actions taken to control its spread and to assure the personnel expenditures of staff engaged in public safety services. The specific language speaks to mitigation and prevention efforts for COVID-19, including vaccination, purchases of PPE or protective personal equipment. And it also recognizes that responding to public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic, including administering these types of services, requires a substantial commitment on the part of state, local, and tribal government human resources. As such, the fiscal recovery funds may be used for payroll and covered benefits expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees, to the extent that their services were devoted to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The third category that we reference in this presentation is support for nonprofits to mitigate the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, such as financial hardship due to a decline in revenue. Specifically, the language references, small businesses and nonprofits faced significant challenges in covering payroll, mortgages, or rent, and other operating costs as a result of the public health emergency, and measures taken to contain the spread of the virus. State, local, and tribal governments may provide assistance to small businesses to adopt safer operating procedure, weather periods of closure, and mitigate financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 public health emergency, including loans, grant, or grants to mitigate financial hardships such as declines in revenues. The recovery funds do provide substantial flexibility for each jurisdiction to meet the localized needs of their communities, and we're grateful for the perspectives that you have provided us in helping to guide us with the recommendations that follow in This presentation provides an outline of the proposed distributions of the funds based on the requests and interests provided by council. And we would like to engage council further on this discussion and the direction by which these funds are ultimately allocated. If endorsed, many of these items will be brought back to council via agenda item for voting and approval as the projects reach their next steps. In essence, we hope that today's presentation will grease the wheel to furthering the dialogue and insights that you share with us regarding these items. Recommended allocations were broken into two categories. The first was a focus on public safety and community focus. Emphasis was given to those areas which ultimately provide our residents with enhanced safety and wellness in their quality of life. These projects encompassed the proposed advocacy center, reimbursement for the costs of protest expenses incurred throughout 2020, support of local nonprofit entities serving our residents, and a proposed set aside for further exploration of the Gilbert Crime Lab should council request additional work on this project. In assembling this list based on the COVID impacts and council recommendations, the amounts necessary to cover all of the projects exceeded the projected allotment of $24.07 million and has prompted our request to use unallocated CARES Fund Acts, CARES Act funds to bridge the gap. The second categorization that we focused on was with attention to specific negative impacts that the COVID-19 pandemic had. These expenses included the costs of COVID-19 to maintain services to the community in terms of physical resources, the cost of overtime expenditures for public safety to maintain critical services during periods of the pandemic when staffing levels were impacted, and the cost to operate the Gilbert Vaccine Point of Distribution Clinic, which provided vaccinations not only to our current staff, but to our retirees and to the families of all. The following slides, I won't talk as much, we'll get more into the projects. The proposed advocacy center is the largest item in this recommendation packet, but it illustrates a critical opportunity within Gilbert to better serve our citizens. The advocacy center offers Gilbert a chance to support victims in a manner that will facilitate their transition into survivorship. It will be a facility, or it would be a facility, unlike any other in Gilbert, merging the multidisciplinary skills necessary to see a case through. multidisciplinary skills necessary to see a case through from the initial investigation to the prosecution of criminals and to the care of survivors. The advocacy center is in the programming or conceptual phase of planning. Estimates for this project are based on conceptual cost estimates and the current market conditions. They use industry best standards and best practices for this type of a unique facility. Because this facility has a high degree of medical and technological infrastructure, along with its multifaceted service provisions, it's complex. The project's very high-level at this time, conceptual without any significant design completion. Should Council accept this recommendation, we will refine the conceptual work and provide updates to Council for your continued direction. A police crime lab has been identified as an area of potential need within Gilbert. As Gilbert continues to grow, both with residents and businesses, a full-service crime lab will offer the community stability in the area of physical evidence processing. This self-reliance would not only increase efficiency, but it would provide us with an opportunity to better serve our citizens. At Council's direction, a needs assessment has been underway. It has not yet been completed, and results are expected to be coming in the coming months. They will be presented to Council to seek your further input on what direction should be taken. As Council requested, this item is being brought forward for consideration as a set aside of $3.5 million of the A R P A and CARES Act Funds as a placeholder for further developing this project and to further analyze the final guidance released by the federal government for alignment with the ARPA interim governance. The set aside will better position our team to respond to any Council direction following the completion of the needs analysis. The final guidance, the final guidance anticipated from the Department of Treasury will also further help us to understand the applicability of ARPA funds towards this project. Protest occurred weekly in Gilbert between June and November of 2020. They resulted in a significant need for augmented staffing within the Gilbert Police Department, as well as equipment needs to ensure responsiveness to a dynamic condition. Our public safety professionals navigated the challenges of these events with no use of force or significant conflict. This item, which was one that Council indicated an interest in the use of funds for, would reimburse the use of contingency funds to support P D overtime, as well as the negative impacts to the P D budget for the use of equipment and supplies incurred as a result of the protests. Interim guidance has provided some question as to the applicability of the A R P A funds to this initiative. However, unallocated CARES Act funds are both available and aligned with this expressed purpose. Therefore, at this time, we also ask Council to respectfully consider endorsing the use of unallocated CARES Act funds towards this designation should the ARPA funds not qualify. This is understated. The effects of the pandemic have been substantial, and one area in which the significant impacts were fault organizationally was the need to maintain consistent public safety staffing levels, even when staff were out sick and we were trying to maintain staffing impacts as a result of contact tracing and quarantine protocols. In police and fire, the use of overtime to maintain these staffing levels had considerable impact on the fiscal resources available. This item recommends that reimbursement for contingency funds occur utilizing, for contingency funds that were later approved, to cover the negative impacts to police and fire. Fire had a contingency request of $850,000 approved by Council on April 20th. P D's contingency request on today's agenda contains $567,000 of overtime attributed to COVID-19. This total recommended distribution of A R P A funds towards this item is $1.417 Support of nonprofits in fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022 has been prioritized, and leading areas of support include mental health and substance abuse, survivors of domestic violence, families in crisis, homeless individuals, and families. Many of the organizations within Gilbert support services that overlap into several of these categories. The requests from nonprofits to Gilbert for support and allocation of funds increased over the past two fiscal years by 59% to over $1.8 million annually. Allocation of funds from AZ CARES and additional funds from CDBGCV3 this year helped to support these requests. However, a recent study conducted by Dignity Health, the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and the Town of Gilbert Community Resources Office determined that local nonprofits remain extremely concerned about the sustainability of their organizations due to the impacts of the pandemic. Specifically, they have lost considerable ground in fundraising due to the pandemic limitations, and correspondingly, donors are not contributing at pre-pandemic levels. Compounding this challenge is an uptick in service needs identified throughout the community and in all areas of prioritization. Donation expectations are not anticipated to rebound in the next couple of years. Given the two-year allocation framework of the ARPA and the concerns of extended fundraising impacts to the nonprofit providers, this recommendation supports the allocation of 5% of the ARPA funds for distribution to nonprofits in alignment with identified priorities and Council's input. Organizational COVID expenses are extensive, as the need to maintain continuous service provision to the residents and businesses within Gilbert required that the town identify mechanisms quickly, enabling staff to safely operate. Supply chain shortages, enhanced safety protocols, all created impacts that could not have been foreseen in the routine budgeting processes that occurred earlier. FEMA has identified areas of expenditure in which we can submit for reimbursement. These requests are submitted quarterly by each department of the organization impacted through the emergency managers' office and routed to FEMA through the Arizona D M A office. Gilbert has providing these, has been providing these reimbursement requests and all related supporting documentation since last summer, totaling over $1 million in identified eligible expenditures. At this time, Gilbert nor any other municipality in Arizona have received reimbursement. Additionally, some of the identified necessary resources that were obtained have, are not reimbursement-eligible by FEMA. This proposed recommendation would allocate ARPA funds to the impacts in both of these categories, and should we receive money back from FEMA, we would return to Council to seek your input on how best to reallocate those funds. And finally, the vaccine pod. This massive undertaking to vaccinate citizens against the COVID-19 pandemic has been an urgent priority in our society to reduce the spread. In February, Gilbert Fire and Rescue obtained authorization from the State Health Department to conduct vaccination pods following the criteria of Maricopa County tiered eligibility. What started as an endeavor to provide vaccinations to a frontline public safety staff evolved to tiered, as the tiered guidance was broadened, ultimately, Fire, in partnership with the volunteers and assistants from every department in this organization, was able to conduct 10 vaccination clinics, administering over 1,200 doses of two different vaccine brands, and fully inoculating over 800 Gilbert employees, retirees, and their family members. Because of the unique needs to safely store, monitor, and distribute the vaccines, specialized equipment and supplies were purchased, which totaled about $7,600. These were also unanticipated in budget preparation, and we are recommending that ARPA funds be utilized to reimburse the costs of the clinics. The allocations presented tonight reflect the full use of the ARPA funds, and they also reflect recommendations to utilize $601,000 of the remaining CARES Act funds. Each of the items that's been presented has been identified in consideration with Council expressed interests and with respect to the careful stewardship of the funds that Gilbert applies. Again, if directed to move forward, many of these items will be brought back to you via agenda items for voting and approval as projects reach their next steps. The crime lab set aside and the protest costs are both areas we've identified that will require some additional examination and are by no means the end of the discussion or our need to obtain your guidance and leadership in these areas. We ask for your feedback to these items. We welcome the dialogue and questions, and we truly appreciate your leadership through this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. You did a great job greasing the wheels. I heard what your secret word was. For the council members, when somebody's new and making a presentation for the first times, quite often Patrick gives them a secret word to use, and it was grease.
It was grease.
It was grease, yes. So Elena came over to the manager's office from the Fire Department, where she has been an incredible asset to them, and I know that they miss her greatly, but I can see why you were chosen to be in the manager's department. Anyone have any comments, questions for Elena while we still have her at the podium? Councilmember Yentes?
Yes, so my question is, is some of these operational costs that were obviously not anticipated, in the absence of these federal dollars, I assume it's just contingency monies that have been covering this?
Yes, to a certain extent. So like you saw with the overtime where we had to request contingency funds, there was not space within the day-to-day operational budgets of these departments to absorb some of these costs.
Okay, so, and I guess my, my comment for Council on that then is, is that's exactly why we have contingency monies? It's the same thing as, you know, having a good, healthy rainy day fund, you know, you do that for a rainy day, and if you could define this last year as anything, it was a rainy season, so, and I think that good planning and having those contingencies in place are exactly what those monies should be used for. There's other areas, but obviously that I'd like to discuss, but.
Why don't you just keep going? You have other things? No, go ahead. We might, we might as well, and then we'll just take our turns.
Oh, so I don't know, is it possible to put the last slide back up? That's a nice.
I will try.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, so there's a lot of areas I would consider kind of in that bucket of, yes, the organization had to absorb it, yes, that was unplanned for, but that's exactly why we have planned for emergency funds, and we, and we've had a contingency fund in order to close those gaps when things like this occur, and so I think that was just, you know, good planning, and that's, I would say, is, is the function of those funds. So I would consider, you know, a lot of the things such as the protest costs to be kind of considered in that category. The Family Advocacy Center, I, you know, that was originally contemplated in our transportation bond, I, I think that's a good opportunity. I, I'm hopeful that, you know, through further engineering and design work and teamwork that that figure would, would hopefully come down, but I don't mind having that as a placeholder. I, I think where I would be most comfortable, and it's not reflected necessarily on these slides, but I know we're still in kind of the investigation of this process, would be other areas that are contemplating the transportation bond, but that aren't specifically, I would say, transportation-related, but maybe in our C I P or categorized under parks and rec or other areas, just to make that package as clean as possible, as transportation-as-focused as possible. So I, I would be comfortable if there was any other items within that. I know this isn't, a lot of those are larger expenditures, so maybe, you know, we need to kind of wait and see, there's been other, some communities who haven't got as much money that they had initially anticipated. I don't know what the reasons for that are, but if that's the case, I don't want to overcommit the monies and then, and then not have them come in, but obviously realizing these are just placeholders and ideas as we get more direction. That would be my direction. I, I think we're premature on the crime lab because we just don't know what that assessment's going to be, but I would think the Family Advocacy Center is something I, I could support as well as, you know, if there was other projects that kind of are along that same vein, maybe that were, that are in the transportation bond now, but maybe on the periphery of transportation. Just a couple thoughts.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. I would agree with Councilmember Yentes in terms of some of these costs being contingency monies, so I would be comfortable with if those are, we use, using contingency, leaving the remainder as placeholder for either wiggle room for the other elements or for items that haven't come up yet but may come up within the timeframe of these monies as unallocated items.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you have something, Councilmember?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Elena, thank you for the presentation. For the items that require construction, like the Family Advocacy Center and the Crime Lab, I know that $60 million figure, I've seen that before, it's been around. I don't know how old the Crime Lab estimate is, but we recently had to put a closet in one of our bedrooms in our house, and I was shocked at the price of two-by-fours recently. So I'm wondering if, if, if there's a way for staff to come up with a revised estimate on the construction costs, seeing how labor and materials has increased significantly, materials probably by 50%. And I just want to make sure as we're planning, and we're always looking on the horizon, and staff does a good job of that, and Council has to do that, that we're looking at the potential increases since these original estimates were created.
I do believe the figures were revalidated last April, acknowledging that there is some market volatility right now. Our best estimate, given the conceptual stage of the programming, is what is presented, but I, I do agree with you as far as reassessing, actually to all your points, as far as reevaluating and continuing to provide Council with updates regarding the allocation of these funds, so thank you.
So when you said last April, do you mean a month ago or a year ago?
I apologize, 2020.
Thank you.
So really, last April.
Last, last April.
Last, yeah. Any comments? Yeah, Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you already know that the advocacy center is my priority, and I'm, I agree, we should get an update on the cost on that, because it may take more of the money here than what we think. I agree with Councilman Member Yentes about the contingency, we had it, but then on the other side of it, that's why they're sending money, is because they were unanticipated expenses, so I see both sides of that, of that equation. However, if we were able to save some money and reinvest it in something that was maybe more construction-related, it might help us long-term, but the advocacy center is definitely my priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just to add to that, most of the Council did not have the opportunity to participate in the planning of the public safety training facility and all the work that went into sharpening the pencil and doing the value engineering, and I hope that as we get into the Family Advocacy Center, that we'll do the same thing, go through an exercise with the Council, give them the opportunity to look at that and do the best we can to save costs as much as we can on it. Thank you.
Great points. Councilmember Hendricks?
A dissenting opinion, as usual. I, I look at all of this money as a socialist boondoggle. If I had a choice, I'd take it all and give it back to the taxpayers we took it away from, but since that's not a choice, of the, the allocations that are here, I would support the allocations that are here, my priority would be the advocacy center. But my first choice, I wish we could find a way to give it back to the taxpayers that paid it, instead of just finding a way to squander it in governments across the country. But I think I'm a minority with that opinion, so if we're going to spend it, these are good choices.
Thank you. I wanted to mention for the residents that are still watching, besides the funds that we're discussing tonight, the Town of Gilbert has allocated $18 million towards businesses in this community that we have put out through grants and loans to our local businesses that they applied for. We also put $400,000 to our parks programs for our residents.
We also put $400,000 to our parks programs for our residents directly to be affected by those allocations. And I don't have the number in front of me, but we put millions into our nonprofits for rental assistance and utility assistance and all of those things that were needed during this pandemic. And now we're at the point where we are receiving more money from the federal government. And I agree, if there was a way to give it back, but for me, I think our way to give this money back to our taxpayers is to provide the services that they need and that they're looking for. My number-one focus this year has been the Family Advocacy Center. I wanted to be the one to work with Chief Solberg on bringing that forward. Finally, he's been asking for about three years now. The advantage to that is we're putting on land that we own. The town of Gilbert owns that land. I do know that there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to that land to prepare it for this project, so that's probably going to be a good three-quarters of a million, million-dollar alone budget before we even get into building the Family Advocacy Center. But that would be my number-one goal, is that's where it would go. And then let's see what we have left over, because I think that, I have heard the other communities that are getting less than they expected. Ours went down just a couple of hundred thousand dollars, I think, but not substantial from what we've heard from other communities. My main goal would be that Family Advocacy Center, let's get that up and running here in this community to maybe affect many, many lives. I want to see it work on mental health and teen suicides and domestic violence, and this is our way of giving back to our residents. Thanks, Elena. Did you get enough feedback?
I appreciate the feedback, truly, and the patience in delivering my first presentation to council. I do believe if you'll grant us one more moment, David Fabiano, our traffic engineer, would like to speak.
Of course. David?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your concern that you've shared about costs. That is something that is very acute, and those inflation pressures are extremely critical right now, something we're working on, and we take that very seriously, and we're going to be digging into that as quickly as we can and pressing our teams and the consultants and the contractors we're working with to be able to sharpen that pencil up and bring back more accurate and appropriate and timely information. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you both for your presentation this evening. We look forward to talking about that more in the future. Our next item on our agenda is council administration is to adopt the resolution designating Josh Friedman, the town of Gilbert's authorized agent for Asdema, I guess is how we say it, right? Pete Weaver, the person that was in that role, retired recently, and so we would need to adopt this resolution. Do I have to make a motion with this? Chris? Yes, please. Any comments, questions? Somebody wants to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Tilkay. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. You can tell Josh that he can now move into his office in time to pack up and move out of his office, essentially. Number 21A, council administration budget, consider approval of a one-time exceptional performance award of $2,000 to each regular employee who, as part of their job, was required to be on-site, $1,000 for each regular employee, part of their job was not required to be on-site, from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2021. That will be an estimated cost of $3 million. Any discussion? Anyone need any further information? Or I would love to have a motion.
Can I just ask a question, Mayor? So my understanding and conversations with Patrick is that these monies are coming from savings from personnel costs that were frozen positions in the first half of the year. My question is, like, I believe that was around $8 million of new positions, and so obviously this is a portion of that accounting for the other $5 million, what kind of just occurs with those, you know, quote-unquote savings?
Mayor, Councilmember Yentes, yes. It's not necessarily new positions, it's all positions that were frozen during that period of time in which we were monitoring the economy. So at the end of the fiscal year, any surplus funds, we have historically asked council for permission to pay down our PSPRS unfunded liability, and that's what I would anticipate where we try to direct those dollars again this year.
Great question, Councilmember Yentes. Any other comments, questions, discussions? Make a motion? Anybody? I'll move to approve.
Oh, sorry.
I'll move to approve. Motion by Vice Mayor Kropowski?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember September. Please vote. Motion passes 6-1. Thank you to our employees and everything that they went through during this past year. We have discussed and discussed and discussed how to be able to give back to them. It's one of the things that Patrick and I, I think, have been discussing since I became mayor in January and tried to find a way that we could do that. We know that surrounding communities have done the same thing for their employees, and we wanted the same opportunity for ours. Next, we'll move on to boards and, oh, sorry, that's a, we already pulled that off. Boards, commissions, and committees, any reports from council? I will report, one of your new park boards members already texted me to say thank you this evening, as she was watching at home, so. No other? Policy items? No, future meetings, communications from the town manager, and current events?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, first, I want to thank you for the support of the workforce. They really did work extremely hard during a very challenging year, and I certainly appreciate your recognition of that and the one-time performance award to them. Second, I want to give you a brief update on Officer Aranda, who continues to progress very well. In fact, he's making amazing progress on that. He may be released from the hospital as soon as next week, but we're very grateful to hear the positive news about his health and his path back to normal life. So we'll keep you posted, but want to share that with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great news. Any reports from the council on current events? Oh, Councilmember Hendricks?
Current events? I had a town resident invited me to a meeting the other night, and I happened to be free, so I went. And I'm not sure if that was a good thing or a bad thing, but it was a neighborhood meeting somewhat organized, talking about Airbnbs in the community where they had the meeting. It probably had, I don't know, 200 people there, maybe more, and probably 40 speakers that spoke in somewhat of an organized fashion, maybe disorganized fashion. Some of them were quite passionate. They talked about challenges with party houses at these Airbnbs that are owned by investors or whoever, and I guess they rent them out by the night all the time. I don't know a whole lot about them. I was just listening to the meeting while I was there, but the meeting was in the islands where they have a bunch of lakes and things. And they talked about challenges where they dragged unclothed people out of their lakes or partially clothed people out of their lakes. They've had to pick up trash in their neighborhood or their common areas, their parks. And digging further, I guess they had a fight club rented one house where they could, I don't exactly know what a fight club is, I guess they watched each other fight. And some of this spilled out into the street after they got done watching fights. I guess they went to fight with neighbors and whatever else went on. Vandalism from these things. One of the common comments I heard as the speakers were there is how evil their elected representatives are in the town and the state. None of them, or at least if any of them knew who any of them were, nobody mentioned any of my name, and I didn't identify myself. But there were quite a few of them that wanted to talk about how all of the politicians were purchased by investors that own these Airbnbs, and they were purchased by lobbyists, and they were basically evil. Quite a few of them went through that discussion. I'd like to say they were completely misinformed, but on some things in their meeting, they weren't completely off. They were very passionate. One guy there, he spoke for a while in a lot of vulgar language. He said that was because he was a Marine. I don't know if that's a trait of Marines or not, but in this case, I guess that was. But he was clearly very passionate. Had one lady, she's in her 70s, and she actually owns one of these, and she was talking in favor of Airbnbs, which wasn't a very positive thing. The only thing worse than that was probably me being there. But as she was talking about it, they allowed each person three minutes, and I think she went, I don't know, three minutes and 10 seconds, so they shouted her down, kind of led by this Marine guy. So the meeting was kind of, it was chaotic at times, but in listening to it, what they, one thing they didn't understand is, just for lack of information, because it was a bunch of people airing out their concerns, but they didn't have a lot of facts. There were two bills that were run in the legislature this year, and I believe there's a third one still alive that would have regulated Airbnbs statewide on some level. Two of those that would have, one of the two that have already failed was sponsored by a legislator in Gilbert. As I say, it didn't go anywhere, but obviously, these evil politicians they're talking about, well, one of these evil politicians that was bought by lobbyists and investors actually sponsored a bill to regulate and try to stop some of the behavior that they wanted stopped. One of the guys asked for a show of hands, how many people here of this couple hundred people have called the police because of an Airbnb problem in this community? And I couldn't count them, but I would say 75, 80% of the people there raised their hands that they have called the police at one time or another for some sort of a problem related to one of these Airbnbs. The common thing is they wanted to find some way to restrict Airbnbs, and they were talking at this meeting about their HOA, trying to restrict them or limit them, having Gilbert because somebody had told them they needed to contact their council members, which is how this person had reached out to me and asked me if I would attend. Somebody had told them to talk to their legislators. Obviously, none of them knew who they were, and it didn't sound like anybody was aware there's been three different bills to address this issue this year. As they talked about most of the problems, a couple of guys get up and they talk about property rights, which, obviously, being able to use your property that you own in the way that you please is the most basic element of freedom. But where do your property rights stop when you're preventing the quiet enjoyment of your neighbor and his property that he also has property rights to? And as I listen to these people, and I say a lot of it was chaotic, some of it was rude, some was unorganized, but in listening, when they talked about calling the police about fights in the street, that's assault. That's already against the law. You talk about vandalism of the neighbor's property, that's already against the law. You talk about noise at 2:00 in the morning, that's already against the law. You talk about people that are not clothed swimming in a lake in their community, that's already against the law. Most of the problems they're having, although they didn't realize it, these problems already are regulated, they already are against the law, and the issue comes, how do we choose to enforce these issues as a town? And there is a fine line again. When you're playing your music too loud and your neighbor calls the police, do you want the police to show up and arrest you, or do you want them to show up and knock on the door and ask you to turn your music down? So there's some direction as how we ask our police to enforce the law, not that we don't have the law. I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm just sharing the meeting because I spent a couple hours there last night, and then I was afraid somebody would figure out who I was, so I left. And listening to them, the concerns are real. And when they're, if you call the police, let's say one lady, she says, oh, I've called the police 10 times. I'm not calling them again, they won't do anything. Well, part of the challenge she had is she's calling the police 10 times on the same house, but all 10 times you have a different person with a different problem, so it's not a second offense from the same person. I just wanted to make comments that it might be something to talk about in the future. I know we can't discuss it tonight, it's not on the agenda, but it was just, it was an interesting meeting to listen to the somewhat chaos, but it was still, there was information there.
Now they're going to know who you are, so watch out.
I'm guessing none of them watch these meetings. I'm guessing most of them probably don't even vote. They hate politicians, but I, I was surprised how little they knew about what really went on. I mean, the one senator that they seem to despise because he's bought off by lobbyists and investors, he sponsored the bill.
Legislation.
Try to solve the problem they're complaining about. They're completely unaware that he did it. They're completely unaware of who he is. It was shocking. Well, because if you look here, we got 10 people here to represent 250,000 people. I mean, most of them come in here for their two-minute presentation and run off after they talk about what's happening next door and have no idea what's going on, which is unfortunate, but I guess it's not for everybody.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have something?
I was just going to say, the committee I work on at the league has addressed this and is still addressing it, and, believe me, we're not the only community that's facing this. Many of the communities in Arizona are facing it.
Very true. Any other comments from council? No? I will share a couple of events that are coming up. Last night, we had the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee graduation for our students, which was amazing. The kids, this year's class were just, just kind of blew me away with their intellect and their involvement in the community and what they know about local government. We are now advertising for new members for the next class, so if you know anybody that is a sophomore, junior, or senior that goes to school or lives in Gilbert at any kind of school, charter, district, public, private, homeschool, everybody is welcome to apply. I want to see if we can beat last year's applications, which was like 80, so I'd like to see if we could get more than that. This year, I've opened it up to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We typically do sophomores and juniors, so I'd love to see that. We have tomorrow morning, very early, 7:30, we'll be at our new public safety training facility to finally dedicate that amazing space that we were able to bring to our public safety, really much because of our residents and a bond that they passed very overwhelmingly in 2018, 66 to 33%. So I thank you for that. I thank you from them, and I look forward to seeing them tomorrow morning. On May 31st, it's Memorial Day, and we will be holding a Memorial Day celebration here on our lawn. It is typically held at HD South. We are joining together with HD South, and we will be hosting it here at Gilbert Town Hall at 9:00 a.m. I had to check my texts. Thank you. At 9:00 a.m. here on Monday, May 31st, I look forward to seeing you all there. And just one moment, I have to say thank you to Valerie Schaefer. Tonight is her last council meeting with us. She is moving on to another position. We appreciate all she's done for the past couple of years while she's been the mayor's aide under three mayors in that time, and we are proud of you, we thank you, and we look forward to seeing the great things that you're going to do in the community and in the region. Thanks, Valerie. And I will go ahead and recess our regular meeting, and we will reconvene in an executive session upstairs.